Twenty-one meeting of the Board of Education is now in session. Tonight, I would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging the passing of Lauren Oscar Eastman, father to our friend and board colleague Cindy Eastman. Lauren was born on January twenty-fourth nineteen thirty-one in Middletown, Connecticut, the second son of Oscar and Agnes Eastman of Cromwell. He had an older brother, Robert, and a younger brother Gilbert. Lauren attended Middletown High School and Wesleyan University, graduating with a degree in chemistry. While working at General Electric's wiring cable lab in Bridgeport, Lauren met and married Patricia Russell of Mount Vernon, New York. The couple then moved to Derby, Connecticut, where their three children Cynthia, Richard, and Susan were born. Lauren was awarded several patents for his work in the Plastics Division, which he liked to say, quote, "Made GE a lot of money." The family moved to Louisville, Kentucky, when Lauren was relocated to GE's Appliance Park, where he became a manager in the Applied Research and Design Center. In nineteen eighty, Lauren was elevated to a position at GE Headquarters in Fairfield to join the newly formed Corporate Planning Technology Staff. With the kids now out of the house, Lauren and Patty moved to Guilford, where they lived until Lauren's retirement, spending summers at their cottage in Fry Island, Maine. Keeping busy in retirement, Lauren invented a knitted eyeglass protector to keep his glasses from falling out of his shirt pocket. In nineteen eighty-nine, he was awarded a patent for his Specsaver, which was his great source of pride for him. Lauren and Patty became snowbirds, moving to Osprey, Florida for the cold half of the year and taking up part-time residence in Fry Island in the spring and summer. They became active members of Saint Andrew UCC Church in Sarasota, through which Lauren became quite active in the local community. Some of Lauren's accomplishments include founding director of Sarasota United for Responsibility and Equity, Florida Southwest Peace Education Coalition, Sarasota School Board Digital Divide Task Force, founding member-director of the Crowley Nature Center, Friends of the Library in Sarasota openly addresses racism. Warren was particularly proud of his work with the Friends of the Library to help build a library in an underserved neighborhood in North Sarasota County, as well as his continued work providing literacy education and support to low-income families with young children. Warren and Patty celebrated their sixtieth wedding anniversary in September of 2016, only months before his wife Patty succumbed to cancer. A year and a half later, his daughter Susan also lost her battle with cancer. Warren moved into his daughter Cindy's house in Watertown, Connecticut, where he spent his remaining years surrounded by loving family and old friends. He is survived by his daughters Cindy, son Richard, son-in-law Angelo and Stefan, and grandchildren and great-grandchildren Annie, Christopher, John, Justine, Luca, Maddie, and Aiden. Donations in Warren's name could be made to Saint Andrew UCC in Sarasota, Florida, or the Susan D. Allison Fund. Cindy, on behalf of the Board of Education, I just want to let you know that we are all thinking of you and our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family at this time.
Thank you so much. And I should add that he never missed a Watertown Board of Education meeting. He watched every single one of them. So he would be very happy that you remembered him in this way. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
You're welcome. He was very proud of you. I ask that we all please rise as Mr. Makowski leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Davidson?
Ms. Hosking?
Here.
Mr. Makowski?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Craddy?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Malaguti?
Here.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Moving on to item D, minutes. Board of Education Regular Board Meeting on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the minutes from the February eighth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Board members also received the minutes of the special board meeting from February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Since that time, there has been an update to the minutes that includes one additional member present as Karen Hosking. Thank you to Mrs. Davidson for making that addition to the minutes for me. Is there a motion for the special board meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the minutes from the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one special meeting as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item E. Report from Student Council Representative Natalie Lindstrom. Natalie, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. John Trumbull, JTPS celebrated the hundredth day of school. It was a fun-filled day with all students counting to a hundred and completing activities related to a hundred. Some classes dressed as if they were a hundred years old. Kindergarten students counted out one hundred items and first-grade classes decorated clothing with one hundred items on it. Many of these classes held a virtual fashion show where students walked a runway in their classrooms to show off their hundredth-day clothing. Second graders just completed a geometry and fractions unit. The focus of the unit was on observing and describing defining attributes of two-D and three-D shapes and using these attributes as they sort, construct, draw, and compare shapes. This unit also develops ideas about equal parts of a whole, focusing specifically on partitioning and describing halves, fourths, and thirds of one whole. Polk, on Friday, February nineteenth, Polk students celebrated being one hundred days smarter. Their special day was honored in a variety of ways despite the fact that it was remote. Teachers surprised their students by showing up as their hundred-year-old selves, planned special writing tasks about the day or about the idea of one hundred and one thousand for fifth grade and math activities related to that number. Additional hands-on STEM tasks, such as building structures with one hundred straws, are planned for the next in-person day. Over the last two weeks and continuing all month, Polk staff engaged in mid-year reflection meetings and met with administrators to review the progress they've obtained toward the goals they set back in August. This year, teachers' goals are centered around student and family engagement, supporting social-emotional learning, and offering student choice across different learning models, such as in-person and fully remote. Polk has lots to celebrate as teachers have stretched themselves to try new things, such as new parent communication platform, ClassTag, or the use of daily virtual check-ins for students that are tied to the Ruler Initiative. It's been amazing to see and hear all that Polk has accomplished. Judson Students. Judson continues to celebrate Fun Fridays in February. February nineteenth will be Red, White, and Blue Day in honor of President's Day and Twin Day on February twenty-sixth. Students and staff have really been into celebrating these fun days. Saint Jude's Children's Research Hospital Math-a-thon is still going strong. The Judson community has already raised over eight thousand dollars. The best thing is, they're still going. Ella Simmons, a fourth grader at Judson, had coordinated a drive-through hot cocoa stand to raise more money for the kids at Saint Jude. It took place on Saturday, February twentieth, at Veterans Park from eleven AM until one PM. Hot cocoa and store-packaged snacks were available for a dollar donation. On Friday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, Judson students brought all their snow gear and had a great time playing with their classmates in the snow. While they tried to build snowmen, the consistency of snow didn't cooperate, although Mrs. Grutner's class kept working at it. This didn't upset Judson students, as they still had a wonderful time. Judson students began their eye-ready assessments. This week, Judson is excited to analyze the important information it will provide to best meet the needs of all learners. SWIFT. Last week, SWIFT began administering the eye-ready mid-year assessments to students in the content areas of math and language arts. These assessments will be used to both analyze student growth relative to grade-level content standards, as well as be used for placement for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. SWIFT interventionists, as well as classroom teachers, will also use the data to inform their daily lessons as well. SWIFT Ruler Rollout continues with the finalization of the team charters and the beginning of the meta-moment. The charters are being posted throughout the building and mood meters are also popping up. The teachers have been meeting with administrators for the mid-year reviews and their focus has been predominantly on the social and emotional well-being of the students. SWIFT also has plans to use their peer leaders to assist in the rollout to deliver the messages of the programs to their peers. SWIFT's after-school basketball program is in full swing, with students staying every day for the intramural hoops activity. All safety and health protocols have been put into place and it's great to once again hear the sound of kids playing basketball in the gym. The program services the approximately eighty students who registered and will run through the middle of March. Watertown High School. WHS students are still doing very well each week with class attendance, mask-wearing, and hand sanitizing. WHS is proud of their students and their flexibility with all the snowy weather and the changing schedule that happen. Course registration for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year has begun. Students are using their Power School logins in order to register for their classes for next year. Once students register for classes, they can begin to create the schedule of all the classes in the school. WHS continues to cultivate their partnership with Post University so that it can offer more dual enrollment courses at WHS. Dual enrollment courses allow students to earn college credit while they are still in high school. Dr. Parlato is meeting with Post representatives in the upcoming weeks to plan an expansion of this exciting and future-oriented programming. Teachers have been working on their mid-year reviews and sharing many of their useful instructional practices, such as conferencing with students, using breakout rooms in Google Meet in a variety of ways, using Google Forms to get a sense of students' learning during a lesson, using Jamboard as an engagement tool, using Flipgrid for students to explain their responses to what they read, and completing reflection activities at the end of each unit so that students can chart their own learning and progress throughout the course of the year. A group of WHS teachers is almost finished with the study of the book Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, which explains different techniques that teachers can use to engage students based upon the newest research about brain science and learning. Teachers are enjoying the tips and strategies that this book has provided. Across departments, students are creating projects that demonstrate their learning and understanding of topics, whether it is through writing, singing, designing, sculpting, problem-solving, reading, conducting experiments in labs, computing, or tending to plants in the greenhouse. Creation is the highest-level thinking skill and WHS students are practicing that thinking each day at home and in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. I also want to thank you for the level of detail that you've brought to the Board of Education with your stewardship of your position. It's really great to hear so much detail about what's going on, both the fun stuff and the teaching and everything else surrounding the school. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Natalie this evening? Okay, carrying on, we'll move on to item F in the agenda, the twenty-one, twenty-two Superintendent's Budget Recommendations and Discussion. Dr. Villanueva presented her fiscal year twenty-two budget to us just under two weeks ago this evening and we're here tonight to hopefully wrap that up, have a final discussion, and then vote on it later on this evening. There'll also be a special public participation immediately following this discussion for any budget-related comments from the public. Dr. Villanueva?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to share a little bit more thinking around the proposed budget from a couple of weeks ago. You know, there's always a finite amount of time when a presentation happens and sometimes not all of that thinking is shared. You know, one of the most important things about designing the Watertown budget for this fiscal FY twenty-two year is ultimately to look at it through a multi-year lens, even though it's a one-year budget. Ultimately, thinking about and having our eyes set on where we want to be in one year, three years, or five years is super important. And so putting forward a balanced budget is one thing, but thinking about all the possibilities and innovative ways in which we can shape our schools and our children's experiences is always my main goal as a leader of the district here. So Tuesday's, you know, proposed budget presentation laid out a pretty realistic picture of how our major budget drivers and priorities feed into our district's improvement plan. And the presentation stated the human and fiscal resources needed to realize those priorities, but sometimes that's the only thing that people really focus on and I wanted to make sure that I share with the public and with our parent community and our students and our Board of Education some of the other items that are really embedded within the budget as well that I didn't necessarily highlight all that much last Tuesday. You know, these are things like moving our technology infrastructure forward in our district. I think we've all felt in the past year with COVID happening the need for technology, the need for speed, really, in terms of Wi-Fi and broadband. And so in next year's FY twenty-two, we are fully funding our efforts to move our technology infrastructure forward. And if you are techie out there, moving from a one gig to a ten gig highway of speed for Wi-Fi is very important for us. It just allows us to ultimately give that student experience with faster speeds as well as continuing on with our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, not Chromebook, one-to-one computer initiative, as well as those digital platforms and tools that we've been really harnessing. In addition, baked into our FY twenty-two budget is really curriculum work, really important curriculum work that needs to happen in all of our subjects, but very much specifically in ELA and mathematics. You know, last year, Ms. Vecchetti worked really hard to do, to work collaboratively with the administrative team and the faculty to audit where we are in curriculum. And we finally have the opportunity now to fully fund that work to move forward in some curriculum writing, as well as a first round of some new mathematics resources and professional development across our faculty. So that is also part of that budget. In addition, you know, and I said this when I presented the first time, but we are appropriately funding all of our programming with next year's budget. And so that means that we really build and continue to build that strong foundation so that we have a launching-off point that will provide enrichment and intervention to a wider audience, a wider audience of our students, not only throughout the year, but also in the summer. So some of the things that I just want to remind our community that we can get excited for that comes in the FY twenty-two budget is that we have an opportunity to expand those enrichment and intervention programs through the summer. So we have this chance to really start up for a first time a low-tuition-funded summer opportunity of some enrichment experiences for our students. And this will be a chance to really get that off the ground and start offering it to see how we can engage our students and keep them learning through the summer months. In addition, as you all know, we have the proposed expansion of our special education program into the high school, which will continue on with the work that the Board of Education has really been behind for the last few years here. And also to that as well, a .5 teacher at the high school that will really bring in some more course opportunities in the trades. So with all of those in there, those are baked in and all part of that budget. So when I think about that multi-year lens, really, it's about creating a budget that's going to create a strong foundation and a launching point, but also to be inspired about the possibilities that can come down the road in years to come. So with that, I will leave it at that for the Board of Education to have discussion now around the FY twenty-two proposed budget.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions or comments that they have for Dr. Villanueva? That's a sign of a solid budget presentation and a lot of work in the last couple of weeks answering some questions that came through me from board members. So I appreciate the additions that you've shared with us that are built into the current budget and the idea that, you know, you're looking out step by step over the years as to how we can progress. I know the movement has been slow in some areas, but keeping the eye on the prize, so to speak, and taking small steps each year is certainly helpful to meet our goals for the strategic plan and to provide our students with what we'd like to provide them on top of what we are obligated to. So one last chance for any board members to ask any questions or make any comments in regards to the superintendent's budget before we vote on it later in the agenda. Okay, carrying on, I will open it up to the first round of public participation. This is specifically dedicated for comments from the public on the budget only. We have two additional public participation moments in our agenda this evening for regular comments. Okay, carrying on, we'll move on to item H, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report. Back to you, Dr. Villanueva.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I'll start this evening with one recommendation of appointment for Ms. Vaughn Duffield to the position of a kindergarten paraprofessional, Category Two Special Education at John Trumbull Primary School, effective February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, at a contractual hourly rate of fifteen dollars seventeen cents, Step One of the Secretarial Contract. All right, and then moving on to my update. So I have a few updates this evening, a lot happening in our local county and across the nation. First, earlier this evening at four PM, Governor Lamont held a press conference that let school districts know that as of March first, all pre-K to twelve educators and childcare providers will be eligible for the COVID-nineteen vaccination. So at this point, we have been instructed as school districts to work with our local health agencies and providers to design a plan on how to roll out these vaccines for all of our employees. So that plan and design will be underway very soon and so additional information will be forthcoming as we continue to prepare for March first. But this is very exciting because we thought we would have to wait much longer for these vaccines. The next update here is about our grade six to twelve students returning to school beginning this Thursday. I want to thank our administrative team for working tirelessly over this last weekend, over the last, and continuing to work over the next few weeks to get our students back into school safely. So sixth graders will return this Thursday. Seventh graders and WHS seniors and some opt-in students will return on Monday, March first. Eighth graders are set to return on Monday, March eighth and then the high school will continue a rolling return since they have a little bit of a larger population there. And again, our principals will reach out with more information prior to the start of Thursday so that all those little protocols are buffed up and everybody's ready to go. Another one, and this is my last update really, is just to address technology, just a point of interest for some of our community members who may be interested, that any of our software or digital platforms that we use in our school buildings and across the district adhere very strictly to the guidance outlined in Public Act Number sixteen dash one-eight-nine, and that's around data privacy. So we use software here in Watertown Public Schools for a number of things and we ultimately use anything that's approved by our Connecticut EdTech. And all the software and any company that we go into a partnership with has to sign off on the ED one-eight-nine data privacy form that's outlined by the state of Connecticut. And basically, anybody can really go on to the Connecticut EdTech site and Google up, not Google, but go on and check the software and a little green button will show up that is approved by the state. So those are all the folks that we use here in Watertown. And so if anybody's interested around that data privacy, it is the Public Act Number sixteen dash one-eight-nine if anybody wants to read up on that. All right, and that's it for updates at this point.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
To the chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Malaguti.
Dr. Villanueva, I am happy to see the progress that has been made in the increasing in-person learning opportunities for our middle school and high school students. Thank you for that. I know it is a big transition for students and staff, but it's also an important step. Since more students will be returning to classrooms, it is very important to stay vigilant in the mask protocols outlined in the Board's mask policy. Can you speak to how the current mask protocols are going and if students are receiving mask breaks at regular intervals?
Absolutely. So exactly what you said, Mr. Malaguti, I want to assure our parents and Principal Lerts and Principal Parlato will reach out to parents with some updates to these protocols, but we are going to adhere very strictly to our continued mitigating strategies of mask-wearing, you know, making sure that our height-touch points are wiped down, so on and so forth, and trying to maintain that social distance for as much as we can. In terms of mask breaks, absolutely, they will continue as they are now. Across our five buildings, mask breaks look a little different, but essentially, students can remove their masks when they're at a safe distance and they receive a little reprieve from that mask. Usually, a little bit more in our elementary grades, anywhere between three to four times a day and then they also have a snack time where they remove that mask. And for our older students in the secondary levels, you know, a minimum of two times a day where they're able to remove that mask at a safe distance as well is given, not only in classrooms, but also when they're in larger spaces. Again, just trying to maximize that distance when those masks are off, but they certainly do get mask breaks and we will continue with that protocol and all the other mitigating strategies.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. So just to follow up, Jason, I agree with everything you said. I'm very thankful that our kids are going back in person more than they have been and I'm really thankful that you're making that happen and all the work that went into it on the school end and administrative end. But to Jason's question in regards to mask breaks, if you have children that you're concerned that they don't necessarily feel comfortable saying they need a mask break, is there some sort of regular routine for mask breaks or should a parent kind of maybe email a teacher or if they're concerned about that?
Absolutely. So I always encourage parents to email directly to their classroom teachers so that they can have an open dialogue and partnership on how to, you know, best provide for what those students need in those classrooms. But yes, it is a part of regular routine, I would say, across all of our buildings so that it's built in and that we're getting those daily mask breaks. But again, that partnership with this classroom teacher is key. So if there's any concerns or questions, just reach straight out to our faculty member because they would be happy to respond to any emails.
Wonderful. And then I'm assuming that all staff members, from teachers and secretaries to custodians and nurses, everybody's masked all day while they're working, while they're on break? Any, with the exception of when they're eating or participating in a mask break?
That's right. Knowing that the wearing mask is the number-one mitigating strategy here, we are a strict adherence to wearing a mask at all times during, while we're inside a school building.
Okay. Thank you. Do any other board members have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Makowski.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Dr. Villanueva and, you know, her team, both at the cabinet level as well as the administration throughout the schools, you know, developing these steps to get our kid back in school full-time, regardless of the parent support that you have to move in this direction. You know, it's much more than that and I hope people realize the number of policies you have to adhere to and the data you have to monitor, everything from local area, health district to, you know, CDC, the governor, on and on. So, you know, you guys are juggling an awful lot and a big step. I hope that, I hope parents are excited to see this move and just, you know, appreciate the constant effort to get us there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Any other board members have any questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay, moving on to item I. Our first item of discussion is the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed school year calendar. This is the time of year where the Board reviews the proposed calendar for the following school year and then we hopefully adopt it this evening. Dr. Villanueva, do you want to present the calendar?
That would be wonderful. Just be one second. Would you like me to bring it up on the screen?
That would be helpful if you can.
I'll just be one.
I know board members received it in their electronic packet as well.
I apologize. This will just be one more minute.
Take your time.
Here we go. And all of the materials are also available, I believe, online. Okay. Okay. I'm just going to present. Thank you, sir, for the delay. Just looks like the wheel is turning. Okay, here we go. There we go. And so I can't see you at this time, so if, if you can't see it, please let me know. Okay.
Okay, I think we can all see it.
All right, there we go. How do I do that? Okay. So this year, we will, our faculty will be returning on August twenty-third and the last day of school, if I jump right to the end, will be June twenty-second.
And the last day of school, if I jump right to the end, will be June seventh. We have also at the very end of the school year built in three asterisks there, which is uh for snow days. Okay, so what you'll notice throughout our uh calendar here is that we do have some early release days. That are peppered in for professional learning, which is very important because um our teachers and faculty need an opportunity to have. Um some chunks of time to be able to engage in professional learning. Uh so that we can move our programming forward, and as we move into next year, um coming off of this year with covid. It's going to be extremely, extremely important that we get down our processes and protocols for um S R B I. And so that is going to be one of our main focus for next year during these early dismissal times. Um in addition, we also have early dismissal times that are built in for teacher conferences. Um and also before certain um breaks, so in November before our Thanksgiving holiday and in December before our winter break. We have those early dismissals built in as well. Um this calendar is created in line with our regional calendar that Ed Advance offers us so that we are in line with um school districts in our region. Um and also. It aroun- it allows to minimize interruption with our classroom flow. Uh as we know, whenever there's interruption, it can be disruptive, and so that we are being very careful on where we strategically um place these early dismissal days. Um and so that was taken into consideration for this calendar. Um I think one thing that we should um take note of here is that as we move into um. See, into professional development for S R B I, uh this time is super critical for our um faculty to be able to really. Be connected to our data times. And so when testing may be finishing up in the year is when we've also standard sandwiched those early dismissal days.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the calendar at this point? So I think we should probably move right into discussing um the second part of our uh discussion this evening, which is defining the remote learning and um snow days. For this fiscal, for this coming uh school calendar year, we've due to executive order, we've been able to use snow days at the superintendent's discretion as remote learning days. Um provided that that option is still available in the next calendar year. Um what are your thoughts on that?
So at this point, the most recent letter on that was um given on October twentieth, and so following that at this time. Our remote learning and snow days have been differentiated. So a snow day is that traditional snow day where really it is unsafe for our faculty or for our students to come in, and so we're asking. On a traditional snow day that there is not um a school day happening, and that we're asking people to minimize their movement and that they remain home. Um oh, sorry. And a remote learning day is a day where we can uh utilize our virtual learning opportunity here. Where people can work from home and when there's inclement weather, they can uh basically tune in and have a learning day that is counted as a day. Um so at this point, in this particular calendar, the three asterisks at the very end of the year means that if we have a traditional snow day throughout the academic year. Um we will tack on an additional day to get in our number of days for the year at the end, which will take our last day of school beyond. The seventh. Now, if throughout the year we have an inclement weather day, but we call it as a remote day. That still counts as a day towards our overall number of days that we are supposed to be in school for the year. Um so that is where we are at this point, unless, as uh Chair Cruddy said, we get a different executive order or an adjustment to that. Uh then we would make that change, but as of now, it still stands that our remote days will count next year. And that snow days um will extend the school year.
So from what I can tell on this, you're recommending that we have the first three snow days as traditional snow days. And then anything after that would become a remote learning day at your discretion?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So board members have any comments, questions, concerns about that?
Um through the chair. Um Dr. Villanueva, will they, will it definitely be the first three days, or will it be, I mean, because we could have a first three day where one of the first days where there's really just a dusting, but we, you know, we need to have a remote day. Um could it be, would we use more discretion than if it's a a more. Heavier snow, more snow or whatever, or is it definitely going to be the first three days?
I think we can, we can certainly have that discussion now, um and I can take the guidance. Um there, you know, weather is an interesting beast at this time. Uh sometimes it says that it's going to, you know, downpour and be an absolute blizzard and nothing comes out of the sky. And at other times it say it's going to be a dusting and it and it's it's the opposite. So um it certainly is. Easiest, uh but that's not always the best way to go to say that the first three days of inclement weather um end up being the three traditional days. Um however, we can certainly take an approach where we take more. You know, consideration on how we, on how we call the days, but I think that's something that the Board of Education can certainly discuss now, and then I can take that guidance.
Okay, thank you. So just um going off of what Kathy raised. In terms of planning for for parents, if if they're trying to plan for potential childcare needs. Um and they know the first three traditional days, let's say, might happen in the first part of winter. Um that their childcare needs might be different if it's a remote day. Um as opposed to the person who might be helping them out on the day that it's just a traditional snow day. So. I'm inclined to worry that if we don't set it in advance, and I don't know how the rest of the board members feel about that, that we might be infringing on. Parents' ability to properly plan um as much as you can plan for a snow day. Um I'm not sure. Um you know, I would. Need to hear from other board members and parents and and your advice on that, but just a thought.
Through the chair, I agree with you, Leslie. I think that that makes more sense if the there's some type of. To build, like we have some type of idea, our parents do. I guess it's hard for a snow day, but if you have some type of idea to say with the first three are the actual. Traditional snow days, it gives a better idea for parents to adjust their schedules.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Okay, any questions, final questions on the calendar for the superintendent? Okay. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to item J, our first round of regular public participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? If you do, please state your name, address, and topic of discussion. Okay, do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item K, communications. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Board of Ed received a letter from Bethany Campbell in regards to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two four percent increase in the school budget. Ms. Campbell states that the same line items cannot be the driving force of the budget year after year, and the district needs to start. Considering and investing in students of all levels throughout the school system. Our students deserve better with more opportunities for growth. The Board of Ed also received a letter from Joy and Rob Goldfarb of Buckingham Terrace, thanking our students for the lovely Valentine cards that were sent to the residents. And not only made them smile, but it made their day as well. The board also received a letter from Christopher Combs from the Institute for American Indian Studies Museum and Research Center. They have been following the boards and administrate and administrations work regarding the Indian mascot and appreciate the manner in which the topic has been handled. They are offering their programming to Watertown High School and Swift Middle School students free of charge through a generous donation from Watertown resident Brandy Sawyer Emmons. An active and supportive member of the museum and research center. All Board of Ed received, all Board of Ed members received these letters through email.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Um and then just on behalf of um. Board members, I just want to thank Ms. Emmons for her donation to the museum specifically designated for Watertown Public Schools. Uh middle school and high school students, as Mrs. Rinaldi pointed out, incredibly generous and really um exactly what um you know, we want to do with the education aspect of this movement. And we want to make sure that um they get together, our staff and and Dr. Villanueva gets together with the museum as 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 they have asked in their letter to um. See how we can best utilize uh that funding and those educational programs that they're offering us at no, at no cost, thanks to Mrs. Emmons. So. Um thank you to Brandy and to the museum. Um I we're very fortunate that 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 has occurred. Uh thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Moving on to committee reports. One moment. Okay, curriculum and instruction, Mrs. Rinaldi?
Um, nothing at this time.
Alright, thank you. Policy and labor, Mrs. Wilk?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Board of Ed negotiations team are still working on the nurses' custodial and secretary's contracts.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Mikowski, Chair of Budget and Finance?
Uh no formal report at this time, however, I'll uh defer my comments on um Dr. Villanueva's um uh budget presentation to just before the vote.
Thank you very much. For facilities, P B C and operations, there is no report, and back to you, Mr. Mikowski, for governance and community engagement.
No report at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item N, report from the board chair, just a few words this evening. Um in regards to our budget on March sixteenth at seven P M. Dr. Villanueva will be presenting the budget to the town council meeting. On April fifth at seven P M, the town council will have their final town budget review session. And they will set the public hearing date that is tentatively set for April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. On April twenty-fourth, the town, twenty-first, the town and the Board of Ed budget pub during, after the public hearing will actually set the dollar amounts. To go to referendum, and the referendum is scheduled on the calendar for May eighteenth. Polls are usually open from six A M to eight P M. I want to just take a few minutes to talk about some communications that I've had and other board members have had with parents over the recent weeks. Over the last few weeks, board members have heard from numerous residents that are looking for increased enrichment opportunities. For their children during the school day in Watertown Public Schools. Some of them are asking for areas where we can find more academic rigor. More staff to teach foreign language to more students. They want enrichment opportunities in subject areas and increases in student-centered learning. While it's confirming for us to hear that they want what is in the strategic plan, it comes at a time when we are budgeting to keep the lights on. Our obligations to students are our most important priority. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that this budget not only touches upon moving our district forward in that respect. We continue the cycle of reducing costs in order to cover the increases in cap contact contractual obligations and student needs. And that's not enough. As more students are identified by our by our special education experts as needing additional services. And new students entering our district are in out placements. We cannot continue to slow progress and take a reduction in force in order to mitigate the costs of those needs. Any type of further reduction would have a direct impact on our students. We would lose the much-needed curriculum work that we currently have. We have clearly identified areas that are impacting student achievement, and this curriculum work has to be done. Our technology infrastructure will not be able to support our needs. There'll be breaks in access to Wi-Fi. Based technology, and that will impact workflow and staff and student resources on a daily basis. There would be reduction in the workforce and class sizes would have to increase. We have to pass a budget that supports the current level of programming and the increased needs of all students. Anything less than that is too high of a cost for our youngest residents to pay. Dr. Villanueva has made a dramatic effort to reduce our increased costs by eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. And didn't stop there. She also found savings in offering new special education opportunities in district. Which is much cut more cost-effective than our than sending students. Um to places outside of their own community. So with that, I would ask all board members to consider the budget as presented, um as I will be supporting it myself. Moving on to item N, action items, adoption of items to be approved by consent, consideration to approve the proposed twenty-one twenty-two budget. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the proposed budget for first school year twenty twenty-one. To twenty twenty-two as re- recommended by Dr. Villanueva, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
To start, I'd like to thank Dr. Villanueva for the deep dive analysis and rigor she has put into creating her proposed budget. Aside from being in her role for only a month, she has quickly tackled the impacts of so many variables, including covid-related spending. And the cost of special education on our district's budget. I support this budget and not because it's the easy thing to do. As a matter of fact, it is extremely difficult. As a taxpayer in town, I have seen our property taxes increase significantly over the years, and at times it is not easy. But I've joined the board because I realized the gap in opportunities for many of our students was at risk of growing. Honor students would always have their opportunities, but many of them are self-driven, so the risk of them slipping through the cracks is low. Special education is an area in which these students may receive customized support based on their needs and are often in smaller groups. Or engage in one-on-one with a teacher or paraprofessional. Furthermore, there are times that the district is physically unable to provide the services that child needs, and so we must enroll them into programs outside of town. Where the district is legally responsible to pay. Couple this equation with the fact that our special education needs continue to grow. Either through new diagnosed conditions or new enrollment of students coming from outside of town, our expenses continue to increase along with it. When I join the Board of Education, I'm sorry, excuse me. So when the Board of Education is tasked with cutting the budget, where do we cut? For those that have followed the budget process for the last five to ten years, you already know that Watertown Public Schools runs on a very tight budget. There simply is not a lot of fat. The cut, the cuts end up impacting the majority of students. Dr. Villanueva and working with her cabinet have created a plan to mitigate a three percent increase in special education costs by finding two hundred eighty thousand dollars in savings. Furthermore, they have somehow found eight hundred thousand dollars in cuts in the proposed budget, both of which are reflective in this budget. What happens if these cuts are not enough? The next round of cuts could come from technology infrastructure. We know, we've seen that the existing system cannot carry the load of what's being asked of it. There will be no upgrades to Wi-Fi, which means more periodic outages. We would lose time and materials related to curriculum changes, elongating the process transition from old to new curriculum in math, English, and language arts. If we keep, if we keep this in the budget, there would be an immediate impact on our students in both those subjects. Cutting it means the old curriculum stays for another year. And lastly, reductions in workforce have a direct impact, an immediate impact on our students. Increased class sizes, reduced resources. This is where we are. In closing, I want to remind folks of the broader impact of our budget. Young couples and families look for successful, growing, and innovative school districts. Such a school dr- district drives an increase to property values. It's basic supply and demand, which in turn supports economic development, which leads to a stronger tax base. We can't, we simply cannot afford to lose the momentum that we have. And I ask that the board strongly consider voting in favor of Dr. Villanueva's proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item two, consideration of the approval of the proposed school calendar year. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hosking. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item O, do board members have any future agenda items they'd like to suggest or comments they wish to make at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mikowski.
Thank you. Um since um the board has approved to um has approved Dr. Villanueva. Thank you. Since the board has approved to, has approved Dr. Villanueva's budget, now is an appropriate time to ask our parents and community members to come to the, the, the public town council meetings, to advocate, you know, for our students to, to just get out and vote. Please be part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Any other board members have comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I actually would like to give a thank you to you and Dr. Villanueva, our principals, teachers, and students of Judson, John Tremble, and Polk School for making all those beautiful Valentine Day cards for the Watertown Housing Authority. I had the great privilege to get to see all those cards, and we have very talented kids, and I got to see how excited the residents of the Watertown Housing Authority was to receive those. So I want to give a big thank you to all of you who helped make that happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk, and thank you for bringing the great idea forward. Any other board members have comments or future agenda items they'd like to suggest at this time? Okay, we'll move on to item P. This is our last round of public participation. I have received some messages that people did raise their hands in order to speak at the last time. So for this evening, what we're going to do is just, if you'd like to participate publicly, just unmute yourself and begin speaking your name, address, and topic of discussion, and I'll pause in between each one, if there are any, to make sure there's enough time allotted for people to unmute themselves. So any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Okay, and just to confirm, Madam Superintendent, they all have the ability to unmute themselves, is that correct?
I believe so. If the unmuting is not working, down at the bottom of the Google Meet, there is a small hand that says raise hand, perhaps pressing that button one more time as well.
Okay. So any members of the public that want to address the board, press the raise hand button, or unmute yourself. Okay. Moving forward, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The time is 8:23. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.